Okay, it is five twenty-three. Like to call this meeting to order. Are there any comments for close set? Oh, sorry, roll call. Okay. Can we take roll call, please?
President Chavez.
Present.
Vice President Cortese.
Here.
Burko.
He's, he, he stepped up, but he's here.
He's present.
Remember late?
Yeah. Member Eda is on his way.
Okay, sorry about that. All right. Are there any comments for closed session agenda?
We have no online public comment.
Great. Okay, so there being no public comment, we will resist to closed session. Alright, so we are resuming. It is six forty-two. Alright, so now we are in item four point zero one. And so any person, take this off. Any person may address the board on any item on the meeting agenda. Information explaining board meeting procedures and how members of the public can address the board will be read. Persons wishing to address the board may participate and comment as follows. In-person public comment may be made in person in the meeting room by filling out a public speaker request form at the room's entrance. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. You may also raise your virtual hand in the Zoom to request to speak and offer comment in real time. You will have two minutes to speak. Persons may also fill out a speaker request form via online submission. Comments should be limited to no more than one thousand characters in length. Please reference in your submission the agenda item number for your comment. Your comment will be read out loud as part of the public meeting. Alright, so now, do we have any comments? Nothing online, nothing in person? Okay. Let's go on to section five, five point zero one. Superintendent or board may request items be removed from the agenda for consideration or carried to future board meeting. There's really one big item that we're talking about, so let's go on to the item itself. Item six, six point zero one. Continuing update and discussion regarding Eastside Union High School District convening Task Force for Positive School Climate and Safety. So thank you again, everybody, for taking the time out of your day to join us today for this study session where the board will be learning more on where we are and how the studies, how the task force are going. So today, the facilitators will sure, will share the focus for today, go into that more detail, where we have been, where we are going, coming out of this last task force. And per usual, study sessions, just as a friendly reminder for everybody, are an opportunity for the board to listen, to study what is the topic in, for discussion in, in a deeper manner, right? And this specific setup will also allow us to have dialogue and members of the task force to share any additional context, given that they were part of the discussion. And this will also be an opportunity for the board to ask questions to get deeper context. And, and part of the role that I want to make sure to play today, similar to last time, is to make sure that multiple voices are heard as part of the conversation. We purposefully had a diverse group of folks coming together to be a part of these spaces. And I want to make sure that we also leverage the space so that the board as a whole can hear the voices as well. So briefly before I hand it off to Glenn and then Glenn hands it off to the facilitators, let me share a little bit of how we've gotten to this point here today. So we've had a handful of task force meetings where we've heard about what are the issues, what is at the root of the issues when it pertains to positive, positive school climate and safety? And from a, a handful of meetings that we had, themes and buckets were created, if you will. And this past task force meeting at the beginning, the facilitator started that space by engaging with the whole group, the task force, and making sure that everybody was aligned with the buckets or the themes, if you will, that have came, that had come together from the previous conversations. Because in the last meeting, we were going to come up with ideas on how to potentially respond to these buckets or these themes, if you will. And so the task force agreed, yes, these are the three buckets that we, that makes sense that we've been speaking to. And so then the task force got to work and they shared their ideas. And they're all in this packet that the facilitators will be sharing, so y'all can follow at your own pace as well. And so with that, I will pass it on to Glenn.
Thanks for that, and thanks for everybody for being here tonight. And it's okay with you, I'm gonna sit not stand and walk around if that's alright? Cool. Alright. Hey, for tonight, we have some, we have some special work to do. And as we've just heard, there's been a process in doing that work. But ultimately tonight, we want to make sure that the board has the opportunity to ask questions, to hear voices as it related to some of the action items that have been suggested. As part of this process also, it's also important for those that are on the task force, if there's something within the notes or the way it's been depicted, that you feel, hey, that's doesn't represent what went down in the conversation or that was said with a little bit more emphasis than it's written down, please let this whole body know that so we can make those adjustments. Ultimately, however, we won't be voting on notes, right? We won't be note, voting, we'll be voting on a record or bringing to a board some recommendations for action. And where they're ready to, where the board is ready to act, we'll take that. Where perhaps there, there is some additional study that is requested by them, they'll let us know that and we'll, we'll, we'll pace our do-nows and our find out more now subsequently. Tonight, we'll review a little bit of just the path that we've taken. I'm gonna talk just a little bit about equitable communities and ask that you like. If you've heard me say it thirteen times, feel free to think of something else or find your personal introd of how it applies to you now, fantastic, because it does matter. And then what we're gonna spend the bulk of our evening on is going through the ideas that were generated in our last meeting. In the last meeting, there was a lot of buzz and there was, there was a lot said and a lot of difference of opinion. It's not like A versus B, you're, you're gonna see this kind of, the ideas get presented kind of as they go through. I want to say this now and probably will say it nineteen more times tonight, is that when we get to where we look at the campus security issues or clear and consistent consequences and follow-through, proactive and preventive engagements that engage students, those, those, each of those items is numbered. That's not numbered in any way of priority or preferential. It's just so that as we as a group can go, hey, in theme three, item seven, right? So it's not prioritized in any way, so I just want to be clear about that. What we are looking to do as a district, and when we started this task force, we know what that was in response to, right? And what pulled a lot of people and galvanized a lot of energy around the horrific event that occurred at James Lake. But in lifting up and looking at that issue, we also recognize as a, as a group that there's issues of engagement, meeting students where they are, knowing that our students are coming to us with different issues, that there's issues of, what we talked about incentives, consequences and follow-through that could be used as standardization across our, our, our system and clarity around, as well as maybe even just physical issues like fencing or how we meet students or alcohol and tobacco and drug dependence. Like the issues are all over the place, as well as academic readiness and being able to meet students. So tonight, as we discuss, we're gonna have to be really mindful that when we think about building equitable communities, that we've come from an approach to welcome every student as they are. And in some cases, that can be difficult. Some kids come on in, let's go. Other cases, what are you bringing? How do I respond to? Our work, our work as a group over this task force and going forward and the work we've been about as a district for a while, is just how do we get to know our learners, to find their strengths and areas for growth so that we can support them? We know that our students come with strengths. We know that even our, our students that have large areas of growth come with strengths that we can build on, but finding them out and responding to them appropriately, that's what we need to do. And we need to make sure that we respond in a way that's just not a reaction, but to positively respond in the best interest of that student, social, economically wellness and academic needs. That's real for a district like ours. Last year, we had more social worker contacts, I think it was over twenty-four thousand, than we actually had students at twenty-one thousand. Doesn't mean every student went. But the number of contacts was high, that tells us about how we need to welcome our learners, what we need to know and how we can respond so they can be full participants in their classroom, their school and in the future Silicon Valley. We know and thanks to the giving of people that we have over nine hundred unhoused, identified right now unhoused students. We identify about a hundred more every month. Last year, we ended with one thousand two hundred and forty-two, most likely will eclipse that number. We know that we have a number of students and in the last meeting, we looked at some data and it's not, it's not ninety-eight percent of our students, but about five percent or in some cases, in some cases with more extreme behaviors, that there's a, a number of students that do need rest to find new ways to positively respond to their areas of growth, whether it's they're not finding themselves in the classroom, they're finding themselves in a bathroom, they're finding themselves with a vape pen, they're finding themselves oppositional, not engaged in a classroom or committing behaviors that are more severe, we have to find better ways to respond. And the list that you're going to see tonight and the ideas you're going to see tonight was this group and the other thirties collective work in saying this is how our system could respond different for full participation in their classrooms, their school in Silicon Valley. We also talked about the difference between equality and equity. Equality, as you see those people of various heights, sizes, abilities, they're all given the same bicycle doesn't work, equal doesn't work. But how do we adjust? What each one of them needs to be successful was really the goal for what this group would do. That is difficult for a, a district like Eastside, but we're really good at it. I get a little, no, I don't get a little anger, I'm angered by outside entities that look at Eastside and say, what are you doing for learners? You get all that extra money, why do this, why are there still issues? I'm gonna be real clear on an issue of equality that we have within our county and our state. In this county of Santa Clara County, there are five high school only districts. Five high school only districts. They are not funded equally. They're held to the same ed code, they're held to the same disciplinary code, they're held to the same curricular obligations and, and help me with my word frameworks. We're held to the same A through G portals and same, same A through G criteria, yet they are not funded equally. They're held to the same attendance standards. But in our county, there is a district that receives twenty-four thousand dollars per student. Just put that in your head for a second, per student, twenty-four thousand students. Dollars, thousand dollars per student, thanks for that, sixteen. At Eastside, where we talk about LCFF, we're at about twelve thousand dollars, fifty percent. Yet Eastside has consistently found a way for advisors, campus monitors, social workers, counselors to be present, to make sure that we're, we're prepared to meet our students where they are as possible. We are gonna have this conversation and it's not a duck away from this conversation or anything that we discuss in the future this year, but this district needs to galvanize ourselves around and take action to make sure that the inequity, inequality of funding, it's not further hamper, hamper us as a district from equitably responding to what our students need. We know we have incoming ninth graders that need more and we need to make sure that we can get the more for them. If we know we have students that need greater levels of support, let's do that. If there's training necessary and consequences and follow-through, let's get that. If there's ninth grade programs or continuation school programs that will make a difference for kids, let's figure that out. And what you're gonna hear tonight, when we get through these themes, aren't the right answers to all of that, but pointing us in the direction that collectively, there's work to be done. I do want to request that I want anybody walking out of here tonight going, hey, this wasn't able to be said or this wasn't able to be heard, if something has gone unnoted or not expressed properly, I want to make sure that through this process tonight in public that that's corrected. And we get into that rectory, so as administration starts working with future smaller task group members and with the board and with administration for making a recommendation for future action, that those are documented elements. Fair enough? Alright. I also want to just kind of give a warning to the group, like stay caffeinated or hydrated or whatever you do to stay like focused, because this is kind of reading intensive. And what we've asked our facilitators is just like, just present the information so without a lot of bells and whistles, just let's get through it. And then the invitation is going to be for the board to ask questions or for members of this committee, if you think there's a nuance or something that needs to be represented or, hey, just so you know, this is kind of how these discussions go, put that in. I can look at each of you and think about three topics where you might feel like it's in a different way. Please don't be shy about that tonight, let's take the time. Once we get it down though, realize we got it down, right? Like we, but tonight is that night that we're gonna be going for some heavy lifting a little bit and looking at all the ideas that are generated. I think in the first one, tell me if I'm wrong, we're like in the high twenties of ideas generated on theme one, let me go back to that, which is campus security, right? And that involves everything from police defenses to the training of campus monitors, right? Like just many things. I think there's about thirteen or so on two, I'm kind of, permit me to say about, so I don't, alright? And then how many on number three? For more proactive preventative approaches that engage students? Twelve. So you've got almost coming up close to forty-five, fifty items that we're, some might just be, yeah, got it, understood, let's move on. But if there's something that needs clarification or change, something missing, and in board, if you want to know the thinking behind it, that'll be our conversation tonight. There'll be no action taken tonight, none of these will be adopted tonight, but it's to give the board the fullest picture of our thinking and the thinking around it. Fair enough? And I just gotta say, if you haven't been in these participation, people were super polite and given a lot of space in the first two. Last time was fun, we got a little bit more grind, but still everybody was holding it down and making sure that people were able to be heard and letting people, even if they disagree, have that space. Let's just make sure it's all documented and noted. Alright. With that, I think, I'll just remind, this is how we start, October seventeenth, the task force members were invited. Objectives were identified in our first meeting and with the safety survey went out. We reviewed on November nine, first study session was November thirteen. This group said, let's have another one, this is so much fun. We met for another December four task force, another task force meeting where we generated the ideas tonight in no particular order. And now here we are tonight with the board study session and then on Thursday, administration will provide you some kind of framework for, perhaps tape for next steps, whether those next steps are taken on Thursday immediately or there's some directive of how you want us to proceed in the future, that will, will happen on Thursday. So with that said, tonight, we'll reflect on the ideas. We'll fill in or clarify any items that need to be further refined. Board members, ask questions, who? And then the other thing we're gonna start with also is just keeping in mind reviewing the criteria. I don't mention the difference in funding to say, oh, there's nothing we can do. We've always found a way to do a lot with a little in Eastside. But there are certain constraints, whether that's compliance issues, whether that's ed code, whether that's fiscal, whether that's just in terms of personnel or that we're finite beings in general, like there's a lot of things that go into that. But also, are we aligning to the district's mission, right? And then we'll, we'll end our evening defining next steps. Stephanie, with that, you want to take us through the next part? Or in terms of the, how we started with our three objectives and our agreements?
So your microphone, you need to use your microphone, not for the people in the room, but for anybody online.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
And not away from the microphone, so that it gets you.
Got it. Thank you. Alright, so our task force for positive school climate and safety has pulled together these three identifiable areas. One, to support the superintendent's effort to inform the board of trustees' understanding of the concerns for personal safety among staff, faculty, parents and students in the district. Two, to identify the various options that may promote a positive school climate, a sense of belonging and safety throughout the school district in the future. And three, to identify possible ways to unify ESU HSD community to be safe, inclusive, supportive and equitable community. So we want to maintain our shared meeting agreements that we've had from the very first time we've met. One, there's only one mic, so we don't interrupt or speak over each other. We do one person at a time. Two, we share the air. Let me go over those right quick. Three, we honor one another. Four, we don't dwell on the past. And five, we park it if we need to in terms of some items that need to be on track for another meeting. So the early identification of themes that we have found is a few things here, there's four. One, more campus security personnel. Staff and family resonate with the idea of, I'm sorry. More security and more security training for campus monitors. Student responses places as the last priority. Two, engage in proactive and preventive approaches. Staff, family and students value intervention services to support all students, top performers and those on academic probation that are facing significant family, social and emotional stress. Three, develop clear and consistent consequences for disruptive behavior and follow-through. Staff, family and students see a need to hold students accountable for disruptive behavior and their, and that there be greater consistency in the consequences these students get. And four, improve engagement with students. boredom, lack of connection with faculty, poor curriculum options and limited access to mental health care were highlighted by students as key contributors to campus disruption, poor academic performance and a poor sense of belonging. So these three themes for our task force to explore, we reviewed last week. These three especially that we're going to focus on this evening. Number one is more campus security personnel. Staff and family resonate with the idea of more trained security and more trained security training for campus monitors. Student responses places as the last priority. Two, develop clear and consistent consequences for disruptive behaviors and follow-through. Staff, family and students see a need to hold students accountable for disruptive behavior. Be greater consequence and the consequences be. And three, more at proactive and preventive approaches that engage students. boredom, lack of connection with faculty, poor curriculum options and limited access to mental health care were highlighted by students as key contributors to disruptions, poor academic performance and a poor sense of belonging. Staff, family and students value interventions that support students at all levels of academic performance. So we want to have a little bit about how did these ideas get generated? The task force was randomly, randomly divided into three groups.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Maybe I'm overly concerned with people who are tuning in online, but you're not using your microphone, talking away from it? Yeah, and hold it towards you, point it towards you.
Okay. How did the ideas get generated? A task force was randomly divided into three groups. The first group spent forty minutes generating ideas with the facilitator flip charting ideas and engaging the group. Groups rotated to review each of the ideas generated by the other groups and they were invited to add new ideas or build on ideas generated by others. The criteria for ideas generated in all categories. One is compliance, the idea needs to follow federal, state and county policy. Two, responsible use of resources. The idea can be carried out within ESU HSD's existing budget. Three, alignment with institutional values. ESU HSD believes in the potential of all students and value our diversity by creating a culture of inclusion to advance equitable outcomes for all students regardless of their circumstances. Four, sustainable. The scale and breadth of work to be done needs to leverage the existing ESU HSD, HSD's resources and the structures that are unique to each campus and sustainable over time. And five, responsive. Students and staff need to see the idea as an activity that recognizes and addresses their needs. We start with theme one, which is the more campus security personnel. And we have here eight items that aren't necessarily in order of any kind of criteria, they're just numbered so that we can refer back to them. I'll be going through them and then after each one, ask our representatives that are here from the task force to chime in if there's anything they want to add. So number one is clarify the job description for campus monitors and improve their salary and ongoing training and development to be more responsive. Two, invest in more education for campus monitors to include improved responsiveness. Three, distinguish between advisors, credentialed and monitors and provide more support and use greater consistency in their job description and their presence throughout the campus. Four, seek out examples from other districts and municipalities. What is being done in places like LA, Chicago, Oakland? Invite a discussion with San Jose Unified, which has a San Jose Police Department as safety director. How is it working for them? Five, explore adequate fencing on, I'm sure it's campus to look at key areas that are not spread out. Six, identify the four percent of students who engage in incidents to explore, are they afraid of police on campus or in the community? Are they likely to respond to police on campus? Explore the weight of the issues that impact campus vaping, bullying, violence towards teachers. What should be the different approaches to different activities? Eight, determine if students are afraid of police in the community and on campus. Concerns exist with danger in the community and inside schools. Is the SJPV expertise in alignment? Do they understand the trouble students? You gonna go all through one or we're gonna go, okay, pause? Sounds good, sounds good, it's a lot. Yeah, and, and just to be clear, there's twenty-two statement or twenty-two bullet points, if you will, in this section. So if someone's thinking, whoa, my, my comment wasn't captured, you can make sure to look through all the way to twenty-two on theme one. And we will put those up at, to Glenn's point, cognitive load, just a handful at a time.
Let's try this. There we go. My name's Jack Hamner, I'm the president of Eastside Teachers Association. It was something I saw a little bit earlier, but I just didn't want to interrupt. I want to let this thing play out and move forward. But the one thing that I was really disturbed by is this, one of the points on the previous slide that talked about the cost involved. And I just, I can't even fathom anybody who is gonna put a cost on our campus safety. You know, there's, if it's something that is necessary for safe campuses, I think we have to find a way to be able to fund that regardless. So I, I was very, I don't know, I don't know where that came from and, but it just really bothered me that, you know, how can we put a price on our student and staff safety on campuses?
Yeah, so the cost really comes down to sustainability, to not should we or not, but if we're going to, how do we arrange the competing needs within our district? So it might not be directly just related to safety funds, but coming from another area that we have to just be mindful of. So not as an impediment too, but just a factor of.
Oh, I'm understanding this as an opportunity for any of you to add any emphasis or anything that isn't quite center point. And and I'll just make the comment, this is really substantive, what has been printed out and given to the board. I I wish I'd seen it before the meeting, it's so substantive. Um, but I can recognize in scanning that there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work that is going on in generating this. So I'm going to be very interested in kind of going section by section. Anything you really want the board to get that miss or just what's really important for you. So that's my comment for now.
And I will add, we'll we'll have an opportunity to add um if one of these comments was ours or if we're a part of the conversation or this makes us think something. But if we're at team uh team, theme three, and we're like, oh, I just had this idea from theme one, there will be an opportunity at the end to share additional thoughts. So by no means, um, please don't think that just because theme theme one has been like discussed already, that that's the end all be all. So I just want to make sure that we all are aware of that, so that as ideas come up, we have an opportunity to share whatever they are. Are we ready to go on to the next slide of theme one?
I think uh Mr. Phipps has a comment and just also as board members, if there's something here that you have a question on or what is that? Now would be a time to ask those questions as well.
Good evening, I'm Brian Phipps from Santa Teresa High School, I'm a teacher. I just want to underline point number four, that um I think the issue of safety on campus is not a knee jerk reaction from teachers, but uh both teachers, I could speak on behalf of teachers, uh we are sorely. Number four, point number four.
That's page thirteen.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes, page thirteen, number four. Thank you. There's a lot of research available about marginalized groups, about access. Uh, there are a lot of districts who are uh dealing with similar issues, some successfully, many not. Uh, I think would do us well to take some of the time and in addition to addressing the cost, really uh address the research behind uh accessing groups, identifying groups, and supporting groups. Uh, and also again, identifying what's been working and what hasn't. We don't live in that big a bubble, uh and although our bubble might be different than the one that makes twenty-four thousand per student, um, we could still work together and find some solutions.
As a policymaker, what would really help me is if you kind of generated a one pager with the essence of your understanding of what the research is saying. So I don't have to read fifty pages or twenty-five pages or ten pages, but just kind of get the executive syn- you know, synopsis from someone who's knowledgeable. And if I have time, I will read more, but it'll help me to orient if you give me something like that.
Well, that I think is one of the challenges for a classroom teacher to not only dive into the research and then condense it. Uh, I think there's certainly um room uh where that might be a consideration for the board to uh dedicate some resources and some time uh for not just teachers, uh classified um campus monitors, advisors, principals, uh to not only have the conversations with other people, but to do the research. Takes a lot of time and my work is.
It does.
Uh, but I'm certainly curious about what that research has to say.
Yeah. In your experience and your under current understanding, what's one point that I would discover if I went into the research, what would it be saying during May and June, you know?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, are you asking about specifically what would some of the research say about campus safety?
Well, you were using the phrasing of 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 group uh identity and group access or whatever, but yeah.
Certainly.
He related.
Good question. Give a mini lecture. I think one thing that we are seeing in the research is that um there is a visceral physical response uh to having police presence on campus uh for a lot of reasons. I think that we are dealing um for the front line in many ways for um children's economic need. Uh, their social marginalization, their lack of access. And uh I think we'll deal with more in theme number three, how we can engage students more. Uh, but um there's so much research out there, sociological research and psychological research about how to hook into a kid. And uh I'm can't say that I'm current in the last ten years. If Black Lives Matter and other movements are any indication, uh, there's a lot that we need to be doing.
Okay, that leaves me unsatisfied not with you, but with the 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 challenge of this kind of a conversation. Uh, because I hear generalities like what you just offered. I hear the generalities all the time. But no one is really taking me deeper, you know, and I I because as someone who looks at data, who works with data, uh, I don't take at face value what is said or generalized. Because sometimes when you look even more closely, the methodology can be challenged. The conclusions can be challenged, and yet they're offered as almost like gospel. Uh, and and so in my process of educating myself and in being a part of any deliberation for board decisions, I want more of an understanding of what keeps being referred to in a general way.
Go ahead, Cassidy. So to touch off both of your com- to touch off of your conversation, I think if I think if we want um SJP on campus, and that's not something I'm personally against, uh I'm personally for, um because a lot of students have had negative experience with our law enforcement. And I think before we even think about bringing our SJP on campus, we have to have a very big conversation with our students who aren't attending classes and who are very contra and also very pro-police on campus, because it'll give the students a voice a voice to say why they don't want to have a SJP on campus and why um they should be listened to and it will give them a chance to advocate for themselves, because I know a lot of students who don't want SJP on campus and it because they won't feel comfortable with them. But they're not given a chance to ever um advocate for themselves, as well as, I think, if we do ever try to get SJP on campus, we would have to, they would have to be open to having the conversation, why are students and our youth untrustworthy with them? Because I'm going to be completely honest, and I'm not meaning to get political here. We're seeing our government not stick up for us. Um, we're seeing our government not stick up for people of color overseas and seeing genocide occurring overseas and our government doing nothing about it. We're seeing so many cases of police brutality, especially since BLM, that the youth um are now more untrustworthy of our police departments, in my opinion. Because I think some of the atrocities have been uh in recent years becoming more mainstream and becoming more accessible to see as youth. Because most of the time, I I believe just fifty years ago, if an incident like George Floyd occurred, I believe it would be published in the newspaper and not in um a accessible to students or youth under the age of ten environment. And I believe that we would be having a completely different reaction to it. So I really think we have to think about what are the implications of bringing SJP on campus, especially with how students have felt, because some of our foster youth who do make up a percentage on campus could be traumatized by past events occurring in their lives and not wanting police on campus, because it'll send them into a negative headspace. It could also send youth who are not having the most perfect track record with behavior and attendance feel like, oh, no, if I misbehave, I'm going to be arrested. I think that's such a large stressor to put on our students, especially with final seasons right now.
Say something, we can bring it in. When you should come.
Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to touch on number eight, I don't particularly like the fact um that we I don't like um the quote troubled students, because that implies something is wrong with our students when there could be neurological things that occur, and there can be several different reasons why a student is isn't performing how they should be on campus.
Thank you, thank you. And I I'm wanting to give you and everyone some insight into how it is to listen from the perspective of a policymaker. Because your folks who are in the community, you're experiencing the life of our community. And and now how it's different for me as a policymaker is uh I get exposed to a spectrum of perspectives and uh different ways of stating an issue and the emphasis on this versus that. Uh, and so I just listen to you with my policymaker framework, and I'm familiar with that kind of a life experience, I grew up in the hood, I'm familiar with, you know, that that is widely held uh among students, any adults or uh on campus. But, or I should say, and and as a policymaker, I've been continually exposed to the life experience of others who have concluded that all things considered, the most appropriate way forward is some way of bringing police back onto the campus. You know, and and that doesn't discount or nullify anything of what you just said. But policymakers have to make a decision. You all get to discuss it, we have to decide. And at the end of the day, what I'm looking for is what's the clearest, strongest way to summarize the position in your case against police returning to the campus? What's the clearest, strongest way to summarize the position that we need to reintroduce police officers and and then it gives me a chance to like query, you know, uh uh kind of like a point, counterpoint. And I'll just stop there.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully we'll we'll the idea is to dive in deeper into what what people said, right, to understand where people are at.
I think uh Mr. Boyd would like to give something perhaps from.
You were in this. Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I'm glad you're, go ahead.
Sorry, Greg uh Greg Boyd, Piedmont Hills High School, I'm a PE teacher, so I get to see a lot of the things that happen. And I'm the Estes grievance chair as well, just to give it, I think I'd like to give it some perspective on our this theme here. The twenty-two of um, the other thing I think we got to make a note is that, you know, each one of those weren't one twenty-two, one twenty-second, or however you want to say it. Four dominated, four did dominate our group, the first group, because we went through first, Harriet and I and a few others here. Um, I I wouldn't say, you know, we talked maybe fifty percent, but it four dominated a good chunk of the time. And I think that alone, and I'm not trying to diminish the other things, but it it does give some serious credence as to the importance of.
Four is seek out examples from other districts and municipalities.
Yeah, but it but it did, you know, and again, and I'll let Jack speak to this, comments were made about how it was sort of an insignificant or but he'll be able to explain it better, because he was there at the following groups, and I think Harry would like to address some things too um that went on there, but just to give a perspective and then turn it over to the others.
This is Bren, you to me, I have a little laryngitis, so I apologize. Harriet Garcia from Independence High School, um, in their twenties five years. It's not the Niner game, I'm not interested. Just kidding, I'm sorry, so um I do want to add some clarity here, because um like I said in my email to the board, I was very humbled to be asked to be on this task force. Um, and I think all of us are here for the same reason, to keep our kids safe, to keep our staff safe, to increase our district progress and success for the kids, for our kids to be in our place one one day in the future. But it did a little bit strike me odd that when we went through the the notes of the last task force, that the safety number one was whittled down to a very minimal, you know, two two sentences with the um security or SJP being min- uh I don't think it was on there. It was about security, improved security resources, something like that. So what I would like to add, just to kind of shed some light on my observations. One of the important things that was said during our conversation was trying to bring more social workers to work in our discipline team office. We have one social worker at at Indy, and she's literally amazing. She works with CO five advisors so that students who need that help get that social work resource where many of us are not trained to do what they're doing. So that's wonderful. And the conversation went around the idea of let our students develop positive relationships, right? Build relationships with advisors and staff, teachers, the custodial staff, the kitchen crew. And what struck me as odd is, isn't that something we could do with law enforcement? Now, don't get me wrong, I I understand, being Latina myself, right? Uh, growing up with certain instances in my own family where I could easily see the the fear and the intimidation with any police force. But wouldn't that be ideal to start somewhere where our students, if we were to bring um law enforcement back, where our students could develop that relationship? So law enforcement is not to be feared. And I I agree that not every school should get a pulse, right, of what their culture is like, because not every solution will fit every school. So Independence in two twenty twenty, we gave our survey. That's when Independence was unique, it was a very tough year. We gave our survey to our staff, students, and families. We had a diverse staff create the questions, so they wouldn't be biased one way or the other. We developed that over six months. And at the bottom of the Google survey for the students and the parents and the staff, there was Google form, like, tell us what your thoughts are, so they'd have to do a narrative. And I sent that all to the board, so you can see the data, at least from Independence. Um, so I just want to bring that about, wouldn't it be great to send our students off into the world not fearing law enforcement? Yes, there's a lot of work to be done, I totally agree. But the conversation has to be had. And I think that was kind of minimized, but it could have been because of brevity sake for the notes, I'm not sure. So that's just my perspective.
Well, we're capturing it right now. If it hasn't been captured yet, so thank you for sharing that, Harriet. Other comments? Specifically, if this, anything around these, this eight, or if there's questions around these specific eight? Because we still got a lot of comments to go through. Go ahead.
First of all, I would like to say thank you, everyone that participated on this study session, as well as on of those uh committee. Question number four, I won wondering that how was San Jose Unified District handle the safety issue when they hiring San Jose PD? How many incident will happen before or after the board approved the hiring SJP? Do we have any report as well as any um you know, incidents that we know what they did on San Jose Unified? Because that's question number four has triggered me that I want to have that question.
So anybody from that group, if you have any thoughts, please speak. Um, my interpretation of this is that that is what the question is, right? Like, let's look into this to see what we could learn, because I don't know that we know exactly how it's working. And so that's what it's saying, like, let's look into everything that you said. Is that right?
Can I just add, Ben Spielberg is the Director of Strategic Programs. He's the one I've been talking to over the years. They do have a um very specific MOU, and it's revisited every year at San Jose Unified, and they have a parent, a community oversight committee that um reviews their, how's it going every six months or every year, and that's continuous.
Okay. Anything else from this group around number four or any others? On the eight here? On the eight here? Are we all right to move on to the next group, next? Okay, let's, let's go on to the next book of. Comments. And maybe we give people like a minute to read and process. Um that, if that's okay with folks? Yes, page fourteen, so we could just take a minute, read the comments. And same, anything to be added or questions, comments? Do you wanna note that number twelve is cut off here, but it's complete bare apologies for that? Any additions, any questions for this additional eight points here? Okay. Okay, okay. One, two, three.
Just a clarifying question on number nine. Define the different approach, assume that's approaches. To different community threats to our schools. I'm not quite sure what's being asked for there.
Were you a part of that? Okay, good. Go ahead.
Okay, so I can elaborate without, for number nine. Number nine, essentially, we were, I think it was my group we were discussing how. When it comes to bomb threats, um lockdowns, stuff like that. We get the same, I don't know about other campuses, but I know Yababana experiences. Um the same email being sent out, oh, there's a, um, that really uh gives people. Our parents anxiety because they don't know what's happening, but they're getting this phone call saying, oh, so there's like a bomb threat and. Your school's unlocked down, and then that's it.
Okay, I got what you mean. I thank you, I get it, yep. Okay, great. And then Britindal?
All right, Thomas Britindal, teacher at Oak Grove High School, ESTA Vice President. I want to emphasize point number ten. And maybe clarify a little something on fifteen, because I was part of the group. Um where I believe an advisor was talking about number fifteen, and I think something might be a little unclear on fifteen. So. For number ten, where it's talking about this training, I I don't think this one can be undersold. I think staff at every level, um certificated, classified administrators. Struggle from time to time with knowing what they can or can't do in any given situation. And I think legally, there needs to be a better job of. Going over the ed code, which is provided here. And also the district administrators really having a conversation with all of the the bargaining units, uh ACES, ESTA, CSEA. To what extent are they willing to back up four nine zero zero five if it's used by staff members to say break up the fight or something? It has to do with what um staff members on campuses can physically do in certain situations to restrain students to break up fights. It prevents certain forms of this, uh it allows other forms. And I don't think staff in general, one, knows what they can do, and two, feel supported if needed to use any of those in a given situation. To kind of elaborate a little on fifteen here, where it says, it's kind of weird, we're fifteen on page fourteen, and then the sub number thirteen. So where it says no hand on contact, we had an advisor who was talking about this as a TCI training. And what he was uh explaining to the group was that in the TCI training, the district does not go into the hands-on physical. Um methods, uh physically preventing uh student violence or whatever it may be.
Does TCI stand for?
Um, I should know this. I don't know.
Therapeutic Crisis Intervention.
So, I just wanted to clarify what that meant. It doesn't mean like the the person who was offering uh number fifteen there. He wasn't saying to have, to not do. Uh the the, you know, the physical intervention one, he was saying that that's not being done right now, and that he would like to have that. Just for clarifying.
How would it be rephrased? How would you rephrase number thirteen if if that's what you're referring?
I think he referred to it as day four of the training. Um I believe.
He said that the district does everything up to the hands-on training.
Up to it, yes.
Yeah, and then that, but then the hands-on training isn't included in the training.
So just add include the hands-on training component of the TCI.
So we could pick thirteen and modify it in that manner?
Yeah. Include the hands-on, um.
Well, then it should be clarified that one.
Yeah.
And I see our facilitators taking notes, so. Thank you for clarifying that. Uh and then Harriet, I think you had a comment? No, me?
Oh, yeah. I was just, uh, the, oh. The different approaches to different community threats. Um I just wanted to clarify. The information that's given out to the staff and the parents, from my understanding and this training that we had at Indy last year. The admin can only release specifically specially worded messages as per SJPD. Because they might still be investigating whatever's happening. So I don't know if that adds clarity, but I think that they're limited into. Revealing how much they can reveal, given the limits of the authorities at the time. It might be specific, so I'm not sure.
Go ahead, uh Catherine. Sorry, just a quick comment. Um so when we're talking about ed code, can we, can somebody wanna? Can somebody who understands ed code actually elaborate? Because for me and for, me and Fernando are students. And we do not know what this means at all. Um. So it's kind of just inaccessible for us, and like, we were going over it, and we were so confused, so. If anyone can just pipe in whenever we see an ed code and elaborate. Also. To touch off your point, Mrs. Garcia. I guess my, our point with. Nine was, can we, can we send out messages that aren't immediately giving our parents anxiety? And um get, making them think that their student may not return home for the night, um that night. In one piece. So I think that that was the main thing for number nine, like lessen parent, parents worry. But also let them know that there is a situation happening.
Thank you for that. Anything else on number nine through sixteen? Go ahead, Garcia.
I remembered my question. Number twelve, it says, look at the design and use of restrooms. It says, do these need to be closed at lunch? Does that mean the bathrooms? Do the the bathrooms need to be closed at lunch? Just from my perspective. We have two bathrooms to serve thirty-five hundred students at Indy. Two bathrooms. Our solution that we discussed was open all the bathrooms and have a monitor stand in front, so the kids can use the restrooms. Common decent expectation, just my two cents.
And was the, was it anyone's intent that we would consider needing to close the bathrooms at lunch? That doesn't even.
I, yeah, I was just reading what it said, right, so.
Was it anybody's intent?
Do these needs, do these need to be closed at lunch? So I didn't know the limit that meant.
Right away, my body said, don't close the bathrooms.
Yeah. I, yeah, I I don't know who was, I think they might have listened to this, but I don't wanna add to it. I think every school is different. Oh, that was yours? Go ahead, Cassidy.
Legally, you need to have a certain amount of bathrooms open at lunch, so it.
Cassidy, I think she she was the one who.
Yeah, so that really just has to do with the fact that, I don't know, why we had an incident where a teacher left the classroom. Turned into a vaping session in that classroom. Um. Teachers aren't allowed to leave the room with kids in it anymore. And it, it's not so much of like closing the bathroom at lunch, more so monitoring. Who, um, what's happening in the bathroom, because we were just, um, my group was discussing how there was a lot of paraphernalia and. Substances that shouldn't be on campus, on campus, and how the ba- the bathrooms were just hubs, hubs for this. To take place and how our bathrooms are essentially vaping centers. And how students really don't like enjoy, enjoy or feel comfortable using the restroom during these times, so.
So number twelve needs to be edited, you know, clarified that it's not about closing bathrooms as an option.
And, um, can we move to someone that's seventeen to twenty-two? Okay, so let's take a minute. To read this. Invite, I also invite other voices who we haven't heard from. To please, this is the last part of theme one, so if anything here resonates or leading up to here, have some thoughts?
Or on page fifteen?
We are on page fifteen, looking at comment seventeen to twenty-two. Okay. Any comments, questions, additions? Go ahead, Brenda.
All right, so my comments on both twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-one, I think, is an important one that you can apply to every single item. Um across the in higher document for the most part. Where sometimes, let's say we're, we have a hypothetical here. We were talking about police earlier uh uh on on campuses. So let's just assume that the district says, let's go for it, and let's bring police back in some sort of capa- capacity. We're gonna allocate X amount of dollars. To that project. Um I don't think that should mean that every single site would necessarily have that if that site opts out of that. Um I think that should be something where you can apply, hey, the site has this, it can be used for X number of things. And if the sites want to explore the possibility of police on campus, great, go for it. Figure out a plan. Get it approved, go for it. Uh if it's, they don't want that, they want an additional counselor because they're dealing with a insane high amount of students. Those, the the unique needs of each campus should be allowed to, you know, allocate resources in a way that's different from another site. That doesn't have their specific needs. Um and just for twenty-two, I would just wanna make a little snide comment that that's what we used to call a behavioral referral.
Thank you for that. Uh Mike, go ahead, uh, Phillips, and then Kiala.
How about now? Okay. Um, just to highlight again, and it was addressed earlier, uh point number eighteen, increasing social workers. A couple of different themes that I found in one through twenty-two was to increase the number of monitors and train them better. Increase the number of advisors and train them equally, and then include uh more social workers. They're each doing different jobs. Um and social workers are absolutely saving lives. It's a different kind of interaction than the ones that advisors are doing, which is more safety and security. Having more of those might allow for more restorative justice circles versus more in-the-moment uh involvement. So I just wanna highlight the need to have more staff who are present and available.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Kiala.
Good evening, Bido Kiala, Principal at Overfell High School. Um, double on what uh Ms. Tripp's just said. I think that that idea of campus monitors, social workers and training. Um we also heard about conflict mediation training for all staff earlier. I think that's important. Um but the one I really wanted to emphasize was this idea, um through this process, what we learn is that every campus is doing things slightly differently. Um partly because they have slightly different needs, or or radically different needs in some cases. Um but mostly because of the staff they have and the and the patterns that have developed over time on those campuses. I think it would be really wise, like, if you kind of look at number twenty-one and number seventeen on this page, and number thirteen on the prior page. And do sort of a overall safety audit with uh some east side experts and maybe an outside expert. And say what is happening on each site with the people that they have, um with the facilities they have in place. And and then do this, at the end of this comprehensive audit, make a recommendation for each of those sites based on their needs and what they're currently doing. And how they can best utilize the personnel they have uh to meet the safety demands on that campus. Um, we heard about fencing. I I don't think we need fencing, but maybe somebody does. Um but maybe I need to use my campus monitors differently, and maybe someplace is doing better. And I think we have the expertise in the district. I don't know that we have enough consistency in the practices. So I think that the auditing of that, developing of that, and coming up with a plan for implementing that. And then monitoring that over time uh would be a great way to really determine what more campus security personnel we need and what training do they need. And maybe my campus monitors need different training than the ones that at Independence or Oak Grove.
Thank you for that.
Makes a lot of sense to what you just said.
Can you speak closer to the smile?
Touche. Yeah, that that it, that really does make a lot of sense to me, and it kind of reconciles various factors. To get very specific, because we're talking about resources, use of current, you know, staff and other. Uh and the variations on the theme on either fencing or non-fencing, this or that. So yes, thank you.
All right. You must have sensed I was gonna invite your comments, because I hadn't heard from you yet. Um, parents. Anything to, you're gonna do the same thing, you see?
Okay, it's um, I saw that you you're talking about that, that more sta- more stuff and everything in there everywhere. But what about the counselors at the time that is lunchtime? That they can interact with the students to have a more like, uh home community, because they know. Every student, they supposed to know, every student in the schools. And I I noticed that some of the counselors didn't know the student, but if they have chance to go like. The recess time, the lunchtime around the, the place that usually the the students are. They can do better, yeah, for the, our school community.
Thank you. Harriet, did you have?
Yes, sorry, and last time, I'll, uh twenty-one. Yes, sorry, and last time I'll, uh, twenty-one, um, again, different needs for different sites, you know, ask the sites how they could best use resources. For Independence, one of the things that I wanted to speak for because I've been speaking, they're, they're an invisible community, our custodial staff. So when we're talking about safety, whether it's law enforcement or fencing or extra monitors in the bathrooms, the one thing we haven't talked about are trespassers. Has nothing to do with students, but with non-students, trespassers, some homeless from McKean Jackson that are slowly edging their way onto our campus. Um, some instances of gang-related family members or friends. So I'm talking about non-students where the fencing would be really helpful and the law enforcement, again, that was talked about earlier, but specifically for our custodians. Ismael, Cal, um, oh, sorry, Jesus, these are our custodians, they're invisible. And so we, during the daytime, smile and say hi and some of the staff reacts and some of the students say hello, but they do a lot. I didn't realize this, but from the AM crew, they leave at three-thirty. The PM group comes in, they leave at eleven-thirty. They walk to their cars um, over near the kitchen area on the back of uh, Independence together. We have one female custodian, Angelita, who works in the K area, which is um, more prone to trespassers in the evening. She's on the night shift. And these custodians check in with each other and they check in with her. So one thing that I wanna bring up is just the safety and security with the fencing law enforcement for our custodial staff too, because they leave at eleven-thirty and their cars have been broken to, into, they are very vulnerable. They have a, you know, a mop and a broom and their cellphone. I just wanna speak on their behalf because we go home at after school, at least we can go to our houses. They're working there till eleven-thirty. And I didn't realize that they have that level of safety concerns, at least from what I see. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Oh, yes, please.
Okay, uh, my name is Gwendolyn Dixon. I'm a teacher at Evergreen Valley and um, I wanted to just make a comment on number nineteen. Um, one of the things that leads to unsafe environment for some is the gross lack of cultural sensitivity. Um, I, I see this a lot at my site. And um, it leads to bullying and escalates to um, you know, physical fights which then can escalate on and off campus. Um, finding better ways to get students to empathize so that they can see the consequences of their actions, um, doesn't always happen across the board. Um, a lot of times it depends on, you know, who's meeting out the punishment and different groups are getting different consequences, which um, is very problematic. And so I just wanted to uh, shed some light on that.
Thank you for that, Gwendolyn.
Can, can you offer an example, either that you're aware of or just a theoretical example of what cultural sensitivity looks like in a situation that might arise?
Uh, yes, I can. So can I give you a past uh, example?
Sure.
So uh, I've, I've been at Evergreen Valley since two thousand eight and there was one instance where a student pulled the head off of a black doll and said, this is just another day in the South. And the response was very disappointing. It was that um, an attempt was made to qualify racism, that uh, immigrant students don't understand racism. Um, and that was very problematic. I found myself in a position of, of having to educate educators. Um, because that was the message that was being spread on my campus. And so.
Sort of lost something there. Uh, that incident occurred and then the faculty handled it in a certain way that left something to be desired?
Right, they said there's racism and then there's racism. Racism should never be qualified. Um, it, there, there was an expectation that because the students who um, who, who did that shouldn't have to take responsibility because they didn't understand what racism was because they weren't born here, country. That's a problem.
It's a good example.
And so, you know, since I've, you know, since that incident occurred, while we have progressed in a lot of areas, um, you know, being black myself, I experience a, a, a gross lack of cultural sensitivity at my site in particular. And it leaves a lot to be desired and I'm sure it happens on other campuses. I can't speak to the degree that I can at my campus. But that's one of the standout incidents that occurred that was very problematic.
Thank you.
Okay. Stephanie, is there, or Rosie, anything, any context here before we give folks time to read or just, just take a few minute, a minute or two to read or? We're moving.
So as we look, get ready for theme two, just realized, you know, you're gonna feel like, when did we do that? There's only thirteen, right? Uh, and you're gonna start to see points of overlap and um, but here we delved in more to the notion of the consistent consequences for disruptive behaviors and then follow through.
The theme two? Yeah. I think that, that one pretty well. So theme two, the first four, page sixteen, we'll take another minute or so to just read. Think we're okay with the first four comments? Did we have a chance to review them?
I have a question or comment, question and comment on number four, page sixteen. Use involuntary transfer of students to different campus settings where there is a more intensive environment. Be cautions, we may be sending more Latinx and Black students to these campuses. How do we avoid stigmatizing kids sent to continuation school? Uh, and I'm, I'm believing that what we're trying to do is focus on behaviors with a common understanding of those behaviors as opposed to, are you white, are you black, are you Asian? What, what, what's the behavior that's the issue? Uh, and for me, that somewhat counters or possibly even nullifies of we may be sending more Latinx and Black students, which implies to me, we have biased adults who are, you know, cutting someone some slack over here, but oh, your Latinx are Black, we're not cutting you any slack. Is that actually implied here or is that an issue here in number four?
So, one of the things that came up when this was brought to light was that some people saw it as, oh, so one of the things that came up when this was brought up was that some people saw it as a, a negative experience for students that were gonna be involuntarily transferred out. The other side to that argument was that if the environment was more conducive to their learning, why are we stigmatizing the experience, right? Um, do we wanna see certain groups of students, you know, frog marched off campus to another site? No, not necessarily. Um, but if it's going to result in a positive learning environment that caters to their learning needs, why then is this seen as a negative experience? So that was one of the things that, that came up.
Um, because I, you know, being a board member, I, I received comments along the way by email, by conversations, but so and so, what has begun to emerge for me in the past year, year and a half is a distinction between a student who is having a bad day or a bad week, but is generally responsive to efforts to support them. A distin-, distinction between that kind of a situation versus uh, a more hardcore acting out, no commitment to their education, nothing reaches them. And they net-net are a cost on other students' learning ability to learn and teach and faculty to teach. And we need to like be more decisive and in, in segregate, moving them out of the situation. And I'm, I'm just holding this. I'm, I haven't, I don't even pretend yet to fully understand it, but I'm holding it because I keep getting that kind of feedback.
Well, you said a couple of things. Um, one of the things that, that also came up was that there was data to support that a number of students were, you know, flourishing in, in this environment. The other piece to that is there are a lot of other factors that go, that are involved in students being involuntarily transferred out. Um, have students been involuntarily transferred out that maybe couldn't have been or shouldn't have been because steps weren't taken to ensure that that's what needed to happen, probably. Did it have a lot to do with someone's unconscious bias? Sure, perhaps. I would say, in my experience, more likely than not.
The unconscious bias?
Correct. Um, but that's just my experience.
Um, I'll close by saying that over time, um, continuation school foothill was seen as a somehow you've been, you're not getting the same whatever. And then I began to experience parents who were requesting because of all of the resources and all of the programs that had been developed at foothill continuation. Parents were actually requesting their student to be sent to foothill.
And that's one of the things that we, we're pointing out, that it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Go ahead, Cassidy.
I'm gonna be completely honest, going into this, I'm completely contrary to number four. I don't think, um, everybody has bias subconscious, subconscious, um, subconsciously, unconsciously. And I think bias can and will play a role if we allow the involuntary transfer of students to occur. Um, because realistically, looking at this from a student's perspective, I know this would never happen to me due to my behavior and mannerisms. But what if I just tick off this one teacher who already has an unconscious bias against me? And I get sent to one of these, and I get forced into this. Would this be, would this be completely equitable for students who have a lot going on? Because realistically, from a student's perspective, we are doing a lot as students. We attend from eight to two, maybe three. We have at least three hours of homework if we're giving each class, like fifteen. If we're giving each class, um, thirty minutes of homework, which if you're taking an AP, it's gonna be a lot longer. That's six times thirty is, I believe, three hours? Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, sorry, I'm not, my brain's not reading right now. But, um, but we have a lot to do as well as students who are looking for college. We have to do a lot of things outside of school because a four-point-oh GPA isn't gonna gar- guarantee us a scholarship or guarantee us admin, um, guarantee us a spot in the colle-, in any college. So we're constantly doing club work, we're volunteering, we're building our resume. Some students are take, some students have jobs, some students are taking internships. Students have a lot going on in their life on any given day. So they could act out as a sign of, as a form of, I'm so stressed and are essentially crying out for help, but it's not being seen. I think we need a, um, if this were to ever occur, which, and I hope it does not, I hope, I hope that it is evaluated by at least one counselor and one social worker because realistically, I don't think this, I think this will lead to a lot more harm than damage. And I'm coming at this from a student who can't benefit with interruptions in class. However, I think we're just not meeting students where they need to be. And I think we need to meet students when they're ha-, being these outbreaks of misbehavior. And I think it's really key to not move them on campus because I was a part of the Student Equity Council last year. We had a meeting here at the district. Um, and we were given the percentage of each, each demogra-, each racial demographic and each disciplinary versus the disciplinary action occurring in that group. And I am ninety-nine percent sure that two percent of our campus, um, of our students campus-wide were Black. Yet five percent of them were getting disciplined. That, I think that just shows that we need to improve our disciplinary system and that we are not so, are sometimes not completely equitable in how we are disciplining students because unconscious bias occurs everywhere. And I think it could lead to some, I could, I think it could potentially be problematic.
My policymaker ears perked up with something you said. This when you said any, I'm gonna paraphrase, that any decision about involuntary transfer should involve an assessment by a counselor and a social worker as part of the decision-making. That's how I interpret it that you said. You know, and that intrigues me because previously I was like viewing it as a decision on involuntary transfer is gonna be made by primarily this person in the management system, you know, um, with an awareness of other inputs or whatnot. Uh, but to actually have the sign-on of a counselor and, and/or a social worker on this particular student and whatever history is there uh, before a final, uh, an involuntary transfer is finalized intrigues me. It's like I wanna then be in dialogue with the superintendent, you know, about that. Um, so.
Uh, number one through four. Okay, what I'm about to say is not um, derivative of anything of any speakers of the last five or who will be speaking next, but just to make sure that we're mindful of time. Uh, and so as we look through these issues, if you, not, not to silence or to keep away um, ideas, but if you could aim for brevity or, and if there's, someone doesn't fully understand you, they can ask you a very direct question. Um, and so why don't you, you wanna respond to that and then we'll move on to five through eleven. I'll back it up to one through four.
Sure, thank you. So just to provide a little context on four and the targets. I think the board is very familiar at this point in time with the early warning uh, system data that the district has presented. They usually present it in a pyramid form. Where on the bottom of the pyramid, you've got the students in green that have zero to one referrals. Then you have the middle one where you have the yellow, whereas anywhere from, what is it, two to five referrals or some, something along those lines? And then six, uh, the red on top has like six and above, right? So the, the context for number four is about these students who are constantly engaging in these behaviors or engaging in certain misbehaviors that are to a point where um, they're simply unacceptable on a campus. Uh, there are, the good thing about the involuntary transfers is that no single administrator through the ed code is allowed to involuntarily transfer students. The site, it's a decision that needs to be made um, by people outside of the school. So those safeguards are built in and there's also review processes where the district is supposed to review all these involuntary transfers that occur. So it's not something that would happen outside uh, the oversight of district administrators. And it's not something that any single site can simply single-handedly do on their own. And it's not something that any single site can simply single-handedly do on their own.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Julio Pardo, are you requesting to speak? And if so, if you could unmute?
I got you, Adam, after.
Sorry.
Oh, uh, thank you. I just want to clarify number two only because of what it says. Just to clarify that, I'm sure people uh don't understand what's the difference between salaried staff and hourly, hourly staff. You know, salaried staff are administrators and and teachers and counselors, et cetera. It's the hourly staff, which are the custodians who 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 will have to, when it says faces, probably end up working significantly more hours. That's why I was confused. Does this mean the administration has to, will be staying extra or the concerts will be staying extra or the social workers will be staying extra to work with these students? Or is it talking about the actual repair to restrooms for because of damage done to them? And that was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Julio. Is anybody here that um was a part of that discussion, number two, that can speak to it? You're a part of it, Cassidy? Okay, we can say it briefly, Cassidy.
Essentially, it was the idea that if, um, in order to like reali- make students realize how disruptive their behaviors are in what, in like trashing the bathroom, have them actually like shadow a janitor and make them realize how much work our janitors are doing and how disgusting their job can get. Because janitors are paid. These students won't be paid for the work that they're doing, but they'll be disgusted by it and they're gonna be like, okay. And it might give them the idea like, ew, I don't wanna do that again. You, um, so that was just the idea. And have them like do it during school so that we don't waste our janitors or social workers' times or make them do overtime.
Okay, so the idea is to do it during school. All right, um, anything, okay. I said you're going next and then I was moving on without you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I I wanted to speak to like number twelve on page eighteen. And the question in my mind is, we review all these things.
Let's go to, let's go to seven. I I wanna make sure that we have enough, that stuff is not skipped. But we will come back to you as soon as we get to eighteen. So if I will time us one minute, let's look through five through eleven on page seventeen. Um, and then we'll see if there's any questions or comments there. All right, one minute. Anything on page seventeen? Comments number five through eleven on theme two?
Um, number five, use restorative justice uh to engage students in meaningful activities that address their actions. Every time I hear the word the phrase restorative justice, I immediately think more capacity, you know, more resources, more ability, more training, because restorative justice isn't just just two words. It's a whole way of thinking, a whole way of engaging and having supports in place and so on. So I would I I absolutely agree with the intent of that, but there, thereon follows the challenge. What resources are available? How is it gonna be funded? You know, how is it gonna be implemented? So.
Thank you for that. Anything else? You're on eighteen though, right? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, like for for like number seven, I think after a few years now that we've implemented the UBR, I think the question I'm interested in is has it affected disproportionality and suspensions? Uh, because that's, that's concrete data. And um
Has it or how?
That's a question I'm asking.
Has it impacted?
Has it affected, has it had the the intended result, right? The intended result was to uh, create fairness in our discipline process and not be disproportionate in our suspension rates, right? So the question is, does, and 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 granted, we've only been with the UBR for a few years now. But is the data showing that it's having the impact that was intended? Um, is there less disproportionate? And I don't know. I know from, I'm on the school site council at James Lake. And you haven't met our targets um when it comes to suspension ranks among sped, EL and different groups that we want to to focus on. Um, so I'm just wondering in in general, it's a kind of a generalized question for all district, what effect has the UBR had?
For those who don't track or remember acronyms, it's uniform behavior, behavior or behavior?
Behavioral response?
Uniform behavioral response, and that is how does staff, you know, respond to this type of behavior, that type of behavior.
But I'm thinking more like the the suspension rate data. Cause one of the, one of the aims was to um well, and the the racial disparities within suspension rates. Um, and acknowledging, if we look at data now, we're only looking at a few years of data. Um, but are we moving in the right direction or are there things that we could do to impact that direction even more?
Really good point.
Thank you for that. Anything else on five to eleven? That wasn't captured or any questions on page seventeen? Go ahead.
So I want to clarify number eight. Eight says ensure there is consistent reporting. The idea behind that is not just reporting, it's about reporting to the proper law enforcement agency. Cause these are certain behaviors when we're talking about weapons, drugs and assault of staff members. Education Code has these three behaviors as mandatory reporting to law enforcement. It's not an option. To go along with that, I think it's important to message this to students and families. Because that in itself creates a disincentive to not do these things. The report is not to say arrest a student. The report is is to simply make a report when these behaviors happen as ed code mandates for all educational agen- agencies. And the district does not do this, I would say, well. We shouldn't look at this as a bad thing. We should use this as a way to actually message behaviors. These are not minor behaviors. We're talking about weapons, drugs and assaults. And they should be treated as majors.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's go on to the next page eighteen. Yes, page eighteen. And can we change it? There we go. So twelve, thirteen, there is no, okay, one of these comments, Adams, which one was it? Twelve, okay, there you go.
Yeah, and this was reflecting on the entire section of theme two. Um, and the question in my mind is, uh, do any of these address the behaviors that that are primarily concerning I know from the teacher's point of view, when you have students, um, chronic absenteeism, which we translate as wanderers and roamers. Um, and um, and fights. And and I I think with some, with fights, the consequences come when a kid gets enough serious fights, then they're gonna face a serious consequence to that, obviously. But I think for a lot of students who are just not going to class, I think they've, it's clear to them, or at least it's clear in their mind that there is no consequence. And the question is, is there, are there adequate consequences if a student just doesn't wanna go to class? Um, and that seems to still be sort of a struggle at our campus. And I'm gonna guess it's a struggle a lot of other campuses based on what I'm hearing. And then the the second thing that comes in is if we are successful getting students into class, do we have the adequate supports? Because uh, some of our campus monitors have been very successful in in moving kids into classrooms. Uh, and they come with enormous needs because they're, they've just been convinced to leave the hallway or the bathroom, and now they're in the classroom. And are there the adequate supports? Cause um, if we're successful in moving students out of the bathrooms and the hallways, that means we're pushing, we're getting them to classes. So there's really two, two things I wanted to bring up. One, are there any adequate consequences for just not going to class? Um, and when we start being successful and and some of our campus monitors and advisors and administrators are being successful negotiating students in the classroom, do we have the right supports for those students? Because there, that's gonna be a very foreign environment after, for some of them, it's years of really not engaging in the classroom.
Thank you for that. Anything else on twelve and thirteen on page eighteen? Go ahead, uh, Kyla.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just really like the idea of the UPR as sort of the answer to number two. It is a list of clear and consistent consequences um for what happens at the teacher level, what happens at the admin level and the response to specific behaviors. I I think one of the issues is that the UBR is really a complex document. It's really heavy and unwieldy. And so it makes it really not user-friendly for teachers. Students don't necessarily understand it. It's a, it's a, it's a really complex poster, but it's also got a tremendous amount of information in it. And I do think that if we looked at who's implementing the UBR completely and using it effectively. Uh, if we did simplify it so it was easier for teachers to access and for students to access, we might have answers there and it might also direct where we wanna do our training around where is the behavioral response not happening? Is it this group of teachers on this campus is just not doing this when students do this? Or is it a group of administrators who aren't responding in a specific way? Um, the answers may, may be in there.
That we've been doing this for two or three years now, the UBR, about three years or four? How long has it been? You know, and for for us to be having an unwilling, complex policy, you know, instrument as what is
And and to be clear, like that's not to negate the quality of the instrument because student behavior and teacher response is unwieldy. It's a massive undertaking. Right? And there are many possible responses to every single behavior. I just think that the answers are probably in it and there are probably ways to streamline it. Um, and that's just my I probably wouldn't be able to say that if we hadn't been working with it for two or three years.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, Kyla. Um, I'm sorry, Wadalupe, you are the parent in this thing. Anything on number two before we go on to theme three?
I was thinking that something that that principal and the teacher said we have to be clear in the consequences that we have for the students. And I think we have to to do consequence because they don't, the students didn't feel that they have consequences, why they are still doing things around. And it's not just for the, I think it's for safety too, because if you, they are still doing that, the teachers can can be safe too and all the staff. And I agree to the, to do some consequence for the students.
Thank you. Okay, so theme, okay. Thomas, last comment before we go on.
Very briefly, um, theme one, it made a comment, uh, uh, and theme two, I just wanted to remind everyone that this was the theme more than any others that had by far, I wouldn't call unanimous, but just a tremendous amount of um, affirmative feedback that this is an area, this is among parents, staff and stu- and students for theme two, that it was just kind of a there was a lot of
Clear and consistent consequences for disruptive behaviors.
There was, there was, there was no um survey group who didn't rank this as a high priority.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, okay, let's go on to theme three. A minute for, um, it's page twenty. We already are done with page. Oh, well, nineteen, the, oh, okay. But yeah, this is, this is redundant. This was shared at the beginning. This was some of the criteria that was um, shared with the task force um as they were thinking through these ideas. Um, or before they started thinking through these ideas. So let's um spend a minute just reading um page twenty, numbers one through six. Okay, any questions, comments, additions? On page twenty, numbers one through six. This is theme three. We're changing themes to be clear, it's more proactive and preventative approaches that engage students. Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
Yeah, on number five, um, that word engagement, that's a key word that comes up. We've heard about students and and boredom. But one thing I I do wanna mention, and this is something that we've been discussing on our site, is there are a lot of students that are just, they're overwhelmed. They 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 come to uh their classes reading at say below the fifth grade level. And their math skills are very low. And and I think we need to acknowledge that we have students that are in grade level content classes and they are struggling. And and they, just different students have different ways of adapting to it. But I think when I see engaged students, I think um from the the teaching standpoint, you hand me a curriculum that's at a certain level and want the student to perform at that certain level. Um, yeah, there's gonna be some frustration from the teacher and and the student. And this is not to say that um, we can't bridge that gap. And watching our, our apartment chair for EL and of course we have Jose Solis, who's the SAC. There's a lot of good ideas out there, but I wanted to emphasize that one issue for a lot of students and their engagement is just their sense of frustration um, material, even on the most basic level. And then, of course, from the teacher, the frustration of like, how do I reach that student? How do I provide that student with the supports? Um, and I would say that um, there needs to be perhaps more um, UTEC, uh, we have the push-in teacher support. That was kind of a neat model to have uh teachers push in to support. Uh, the students had that need. So when I see like this engagement, it's it's not that necessarily that teachers aren't caring about student engagement, but we're seeing a a gap, like there's an ability gap. And yeah, that will create frustration, just like all of us probably had when we go to a meeting and we're not fully you know, up to speed. We feel that as well. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that point out because I think we have students and teachers kind of getting frustrated with each other because we're, we need to more broadly address that concern.
Thank you for that. Anybody else on anything from one to six on page twenty?
The number six is talking about the workshop for the parents. And I think we have to, if you're not making a workshop for a parent, you have to be like doing that many times because sometimes just the principals has to do it in the morning. And many parents are working and they don't have a chance to go to the, to the workshop. And if it is not, so I have many parents, we can still do it in the morning, but we can give you a chance for the parents can show up.
Thank you for that. Anything else on this? All right, let's go on to seven to twelve. It's eight thirty, y'all. So we'll do a minute to read and then any additional comments. Okay, spend about a minute. Maybe two. Um, any questions or comments, thoughts, additional context to add here? Go ahead, Thomas.
Thank you. Uh, speaking a little bit more to number eleven, uh, because there's some things that were left out of this. The idea, or at least part of the idea, the remedial classes of math, science and English is pretty straightforward. That doesn't need clarification. Um, whereas it's offer C T as an alternative to visual arts, it should say visual arts, um, or world language. Because California allows that to be an option. Uh, the district currently does not on its graduating requirements. The other thing that was left off is to remove math two and English four as a required set of courses. The idea behind that is essentially to meet students where they're at. Every student should have the opportunity to have the A to G pathway as their default. But if you don't allow students the opportunity to, let's say, opt out, you are essentially forcing some students into classes. That is going to disincentivize them from trying. If it takes them years, three or four years simply to pass math one.
Thank you for that, Thomas. Go ahead, um.
I agree with Thomas in the fact that I think, um, we should change graduation requirements, but also make them more clear. Because I personally am struggling with math three because a lot of factors and how it's being explained to me, I'm not understanding, meaning I'm failing the class. I have been told several times that I'm not allowed to drop it and I'm questioning why. And I'm, I know I have blatantly communicated that I'm not going to pass this class. I'm just wasting my time here and I'm not being listened to. I think that's something that a lot of students can relate to and the fact that we're not being listened to when we're saying the class is too hard. Or even asking if we can switch our teacher, because some teachers, I'm okay to say it, are better than others. And some students can resonate with one teacher over another. And I think that we should listen to students if we really want them to actually learn. As well as making graduation requirements so much more readable and less confusing to students. Because personally, I didn't, I keep getting told that I can't graduate if I don't pa- pass math three. Although our graduation requirements are saying I only need math one and two to graduate. Why are our faculty miscommunicating these things to students as well as kind of gaslighting them into thinking you need to take all of these courses to pass your, and graduate? When realistically, they don't need to take four years of math if they struggle with it. And I think that a lot of students struggle with math and I think we should really look at the requirements for that as well as look at how are we communicating graduation requirements?
Thank you, Cassidy. Uh, go ahead, Doe.
I just have quick questions, uh, maybe the superintendent, the administration can help me at our future board meetings on these topics. How many of our students are repeating some of these, uh, math one, English one, science classes, some of the basics? I just have a, give me an understanding of the ballpark number, what we might be looking at.
Yeah, I think we can get that information to you at our future meeting. Uh, we do that, some of that we do when we look at our L cap data and our K P Ms. And we do, I know Von Leif, uh, famously talks about the V N F lists and looking at repeat grades. So we can, we can get you that information.
If they're repeating more than one time, I'd like to have that number separate out as well. So just have an understanding so that from the, what would Mark and, I'm sorry, Mark, Mr., Mr., Adam, as well as the principal, Kyla have said earlier, is the idea if, if we're not meeting as soon as, as where they are, uh, because they have been missing a number of classes or you're in COVID, um, online learning was not suitable for them.
Absolutely, and meeting students where they are and being able to positively respond for full participation are the, all three steps in, in making those determinations.
Yep. Other comments on, I was just, I would say all of theme three, one through twelve. We have it in front of us. Yes, go ahead, Guadalupe.
I think in generation, the generation that we are talking about, um, uh, in, in society, in the high school in here, you don't, you don't think that parents can be part of the growth of the high schoolers. And we think there are adults and they don't are adults. They still have, um, they are growing up, but we have to, like, like a parent, like a staff and member of the community, we have to, to take care of them and we have to like giving a path to how they can deal in the society. And sometimes that when they, you make decisions around not just, I think that teachers and the staff, you just, um, uh, decide for, for them, but what about if you always like, like we say, if we be proactive? We can talk when it's the little things that happen in the school with the parents and how to we can deal before that escalate the situations in everywhere. But, uh, and about, um, the math and, um, in, uh, they say if you, they don't understand English now, when the common code was coming, it's more the compression for the math two. And if you, they don't, they don't have enough knowledge for the English, how they can understand math?
For that, Guadalupe. Anything else on this section, theme three? Okay, now that we've done all the themes, anything on any of the themes? That wasn't shared or that came to mind as? Anything? There we go, Fernando.
Oh, I just have some questions directed at theme one, especially, um, question four, when it, um, talks about inviting a discussion with S J Unified, which has S J P D and safety directors. Why instead of doing that, why can't we just reach out directly to the districts and ask them? Wouldn't that provide much more accurate and much more like detailed, um, reports about what's going on in those districts rather than just asking maybe like a third party organization?
Ask districts directly. Thank you. Yeah. Anything else?
I also have, um, something else to add about, on about question eight, or not, question, uh, point eight on, um, theme one where it addresses the concerns of bringing S J P D. Um, I think that they don't really understand what a troubled student is. Their roles are really to react to trouble and to sort of stop anything from happening. They're not, they're not, they're not a social worker in the, like, in the case that they empathize with the student, they're only doing their job. If they see some fighting going on or some commotion, they're going to go there and intervene. They're not going to try to empathize with a student and see what happened and see who was in the wrong, who was in the right. They're just in there, just to cut it out. So I think, um, when it comes to relationship building with police, it, I guess it's kind of hard to sort of, um, balance because at one point, I like, at one side, I don't think, do they really have the time to sort of connect with those students, sort of understand where they're coming from? Or like, on the other hand, should they just, um, really be doing their jobs? Like what I'm saying is, um, I don't think they're really a sort of, um, like, uh, how do I say it, like, they are compassionate about understanding students and empathizing them more and more so they're more like focused on just, uh, like, um, doing their job, which is just intervening when things, when you see a fight breaking out, when you see, um, people arguing when, when uh, situations are escalating. So I think that's just a point that I thought was interesting.
Thank you, Fernando. Go ahead, Doe.
So like my colleagues, uh, Senor Herrera, I, I look at these ideas, these themes as how does it inform me as a policymakers? And when I look at the number of incidents that we have in the last three years since I've been on the board, the dozen dozens of incidents and, and yet there are some common theme, there's common incidents among these incidents. And so when I look at these ideas, how do these ideas can either A mitigate the, the, the probability of this occurring? Or if it does occur, how do you mitigate, how do you reduce the impact, the negative impact from these incidents? So I look at incidents such as at, at James Lick recently, and I'm talking about the stabbing, but also the instance where, where Mr. McAdam was, for lack of a better term, you were kicked as you were trying to, um, prevent, uh, further injury to a student. So those are the, how I inform me as whether the ideas that we have here are practical or not. And the other one is, I look at things as how do we prevent from happening? Are the program that we have, whether it's R O T C or the C T, uh, as number ten on page twenty-one, uh, number eleven on page, also page twenty-one or the C T E, whether they are practical in, um, attract and, and, and having our students in class or not, right? Those, right? Because those are what that mitigate the risk of, of, of incidents. When students are in class versus they are, uh, for lack of a better term, roaming the hallway or roaming the, the campus. Uh, those are how I inform. So, uh, and I don't need to have a single page, although a single page would be fantastic for my colleague and I too. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm welcome any studies that you have and you can feel free to send to the board and I, uh, uh, on any research that you, you find to be relevant, uh, how we can inform us, um, uh, about the many, many ideas to summarize into actionable item.
So we have, we have, thank you for that, trustee Doe. Um, and the administration will continue, like, um, they mentioned, um, engaging folks. This is, we're almost, I mean, I don't want to say we're almost done, but we're well into the work. Um, and I think, you know, if we look at the next steps, I think, well, I'll let you speak superintendent in terms of what our next steps are.
I'd like to make a comment on that first on next steps.
Go ahead.
Um, it, it seems to me that we're at a point, well, that we've arrived at bringing all the issues to point. Uh, there have been meetings of the task force. This document reflects a lot of substance and there's some good dialogue that took place. And, and there's a broad representation of, of the ways, of all the ways of looking at this and how we can formulate, you know, moving forward, how to move forward. So for me, the, the point that we're at is for the superintendent to put together a set of recommendations for the consideration of the board, taking into account all this community feedback that has been received. Uh, and it will become the basis for further engagement. Um, and, uh, one thing that I am seeing as uh, necessary and unavoidable is to resolve the issue of police on campus or not on campus as a part of the entire framework of climate and safety on campuses. I, i- i- in the past couple of years, I, I know I'm one member of the board and there were others, maybe all of us, uh, who weren't prepared to even put this on the agenda. You know, whether regarding police officers, we felt like we first needed to build more capacity in the system in other ways, such as is being discussed here with more staff and different policies and approaches. And we've been doing that for two years. And yet, within the past several months, uh, the issue of police on campus has been surfacing and resurfacing and becoming more, more emphatic. Uh, and unavoidable for the board to actually allow a public dialogue on the issue. Um, and I think it would be, we would be justly criticized and severely criticized if we avoided that dial, that, that, uh, debate or whatever deliberation, here's the word. Uh, and so in the, we're in the set of recommendations that the superintendent formulas regarding climate and safety, uh, and taking into account all of what we've been listening, I think that needs to be addressed. Uh, and, um, I, I know that I just re, restate what I said at the beginning. I'm looking for the bottom line synthesis of the yes, police back on campus and the no back. I, you know, I can generalize all day because I've been hearing this issue for years. But I want substantive, bottom line, point counterpoint on yes and no regarding that issue. Uh, and, and also, um, whatever anecdotal data we have that on this campus, this two or three incidents occurred or no incidents occurred or ten incidents occurred here, not something beyond the research says, but what's true here on, in this district, on these campuses, in people's experience? You gave a good example of what you were concerned about in real time. Something that occurred that you're aware of and others may also be, I, that kind of information is going to go a long way with, for me as one member of the board, in giving more credence to, to what's being advocated for or against. Thank you. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I always am looking to, I never go on position on issues like this. My stand is always, this is my current understanding. I'm looking for the knowledge and wisdom of our stakeholders, our spectrum of stakeholders. The point, counterpoint of our stakeholders speaking. And, and, and then when that's generated and, and clear, then I'm getting to like, okay, now here's my position. Here's my vote.
Thank you for that. And actually, I, I want to make sure that here's some other colleagues. Heard from Doe, heard from Herrera, um, Cortezi or Lily, is there anything? That y'all would like to add?
Just my appreciation to all of you and to the members of the task force. It's, you know, been along several late nights and I'm in between contemplating these issues and, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to what the administration can bring back in the way of recommendations that are actionable. And, um, I know some of these things are gonna, gonna take a while.
Well, my point is, um, under two nine meeting objective, we say review the criteria by which ideas will be studied and further explored. I was wondering about, when this question, we talk about Samurai U B R as well as, uh, the ad code four nine zero, zero, zero five. How do we utilize intervention? So I think one of those areas, I think is, I heard is very important. Then we can look into further before we make a decision.
Superintendent, is there anything else that you need from the board?
What I hear is that you'd like us to create some form of recommendation, some maybe for immediate action and others for further consideration. And I'm hearing certain areas for further consideration. I think there's members in our community that would like all answers now. Totally get that. Um, but I hear from a policymaking body that there's some things that you would like to explore a little further. I'd also just like historically to say that we have been working on issues in our district for quite some time. I remember when I was a principal, I used to sit there in the board meetings in the back and there would always be the safety survey, right? And generate a lot of, some of the issues that we hear now. Uh, we learned about our issues of disproportionality, which is a real thing. Uh, most identifiable based on special education status and race, real things. I have to compliment the work that's happened at sites pre-COVID in learning to deal, uh, when there was officers on campus and then because of this, the strain on the, the P D department itself, um, when officers were less present and how sites and teachers and campus monitors already started making adaptations. Then was it March sixteen?
Yes.
Right? We all went home for a little bit, uh, and, and then when we came back, it was a different, there were different realities and different needs. I, I encourage us to know that in working with that U B R, that's an amazing document. And so it's one thing, since we brought out a, a document, have things gotten better? Or have we learned that we need different forms of training, different means of presentation? And how it's utilized on day to day? Like those, those are all the complexities on what we do. There are certain things about consequences and follow-through, do we note it, right? Like, absolutely. Are we needing to engage with certain learners? Like, absolutely. Are we needing to engage with certain learners in a different place to where they are academically? Absolutely. Are we ready to change standards for certain students? I don't know that. You know, we did a, a big move by moving through A through G as a district. And I know some people got up and said, hey, that's not for everybody. And maybe it's not, but we've managed to make it more accessible for a greater number of students by aiming high and speaking to the health. So I, I see this work in making these recommendations not from scratch. Because I've seen too much good work out of ed services, student services. I've seen too much good work in adjustments in terms of how we're transitioning students in special ed. Too much good work in what our counselors and social workers are and advisors and campus monitors are ready themselves to do. And we can continue that work with this in mind. It is not starting over. It's not throwing out where we've grown. But it's recognizing where we are and where adjustments need to be made. We can do that. And so we'll present you with some informed recommendations. Like if someone's aware of where the tensions are in that, if you're ready to act after that, you know, with those tensions involved or need further study for further delineation, then that's what will have to be the interaction between administration board and our community as to how we progress. We are, we are ready to meet students where they are and to continue that way. I don't say these things to say we're fine. No problem here, but I do speak to the health, understanding that we're not fully cured. All right. I want to speak to what's working and what, where we identify places that we can become even healthier, not as a blame, not calling out a sickness, but saying that we can do that, not backing away from a challenge or reality, but recognizing there are also really strong places for us to build going forward, states to the work that's happened within our community, our partners, within the leadership of ed, ed services and on our, in our site level. So everything after that will die a tribe. Thanks, Glenn. It's getting late, but I truly appreciate your willingness to stay within and work with the, the facilitation and work with the board in a study session format. They're two very different experiences, but to couple them to get to a point where we can say these things out loud and be prepared to address them. There are 48 or something items on the list. They'll probably get incorporated to a response somehow, but not 48 action items, right? As we move forward. But I thank you for your investment and I think, I want to thank our facilitators this evening and who worked with us before in helping us get this right. It's, it's complex, right? And for what pointing us towards where we want to land. Like I said, no vote will be taken on this process or on the notes or on even what happened here tonight. But ultimately, when we arrive at an understanding of this is the best next move for Eastside's community, then those are the moves we'll make.
Yeah, and finding a balance between not taking a year from now. You know, it, it feels like this might be a series of, some things might come sooner than others.
Yeah, I mean, there is policy in place here, which sometimes slows a response, right? And there's, you know, we have a, we have a resolution that informs our action and we have a mission, a purpose that goes for that. And there are, as we see in this, in this group, there are different, some people showed up to this event saying engagement is the answer. Some people, consequences is the first point, then you move to engagement. So for some people, it was the presence of other, whether it was police or different trainings for people. I think all of us, as on the other side of this experience, probably still hold on to where we think we should move first, but also have a greater sense of the complexity of, of putting together a complete plan as we have and making sure our complete plan is better to meet the challenges of today.
Okay, I, it's 8:55. I want to be conscious of, of our time.
I, I just have the need to one more time say how proud I am of the work done by the task force, climate and safety task force. And the administration's work with all of this. It's just yay.
Did you say it's just yay?
It's like yay.
Oh, my goodness. Yay and a thumbs up. Go ahead, Harriet, Harriet, before we close out.
I've never done this before. So from what I hear, all of this will be gathered, presented to the board. I know your next board meeting is Thursday, which is probably too soon to do anything, which is cool. So, I don't know, January, February, March, is there a timeline where three out of the 48 will be considered? Will there be an email to this, to the community members? I, I just don't understand the timeline. And if it's next semester or whenever it happens, then what happens in the meantime when our students show up tomorrow at 8:30 for class to do another school day?
So I would slightly modify the way you phrased that, your understanding. It's not, all of this will be brought forward. This is a lot, what's going to be brought forward are the superintendent's recommendations. It's going to be based or use the benefit from this, from this work. That's what's going to show up next in a public forum.
Is there anything that you would like to add, superintendent?
Simply that we will continue the good work in the building that we have done. That's, that's one thing that I loved hearing in our first task meeting is how we spoke about where independence was two years ago and where it is today, knowing that we've done a lot of growth and of the efforts of a lot of adults and how they respond to students and how that messaging has worked. And that will continue that forward, knowing that there might be some areas that we put greater emphasis on to see where we can become healthier. And yes, it won't be 48 items, but it will be recommendations going forward, some for quicker adaptation than later.
I want to, I want to, I want to say that I really want to say thank you to our students and parents who involved in this task force. And especially they took the time to be involved in our study session. Thank you.
Oh, yes. And, and that's, that's what I will end with as well, just my gratitude.
I make my super quick. What I'm hearing from Harry and, and all of the people here, but also those outside, is that there's a request for a timeline in term of what's for the urgency, such as I'm sure folks at James Lick's would like to have it sooner rather than later, probably yesterday. But, but we also want to have items that are longer term. So maybe a short term immediately, you know, immediate. And then there's the urgent, you know, the, the moderate and the long term.
And so some of those
for the, I just want to take a moment to thank the, the task force for all of your incredible work. Much, much, much appreciated.
Yeah. And so staff has been working with James Lake and the introductory, getting a social worker placed there for an in-house form of suspension. Also, when there is not an in-house suspension, to be working with those students, exactly who we're talking about, that need that extra support as to why are they here? Where can we get you re-engaged? So that's something that will continue there. And we'll continue those discussions just in terms of training or placement or hotspots along the way as, as the board has very concrete policies in place and some items and some of the requests from the site.
Okay. All right, friends. Again, thank you, everybody for participating. It has been an honor to support and be a part of these spaces with you all. I would like to say now I'm going to report on closed session, but I am not. We, the board needs to go back to closed session for a brief period to take a quick action and then we will come right back out to close the meeting. It'll take like a minute. So then we'll come back.
And let's be clear that that action is in no way related to the, the conversation around safety and climate. So if you're ready to go home, do that.
Yes. All right, we are back from closed session. So action item number seven, 701, legal counsel. So closed session item 2.02, the board unanimously voted to approve the superintendent's annual evaluation with a satisfactory rating. There are no further actions to be reported. It is 9:03. This meeting is adjourned.